Today is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Cappell City Council meeting. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll be convening into the executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce that we're entering work session, at which time the public is invited and encouraged to attend. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 6:06 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we will convene into a work session in the first floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. We've got five items on work session. First one is regarding the agenda. We had several questions come up via email in advance. Did anybody want to follow up or have any other questions concerning those? Bijan?
Yeah, number G.
Jessica. Yes, sir. What's your question?
How many offers or bids did we receive for this project?
So for the towers portion, that portion did not go to bid. As we worked with our procurement team on the custom nature of those towers, we're classifying them as art pieces, which are exempt from the traditional bid process. The site, however, did go out to bid.
So how many bids?
Two bids on the site.
Okay. And the one, the first one you mentioned, so who's doing that?
So this is a general contractor called FM Constructors, is overseeing the build of these six towers.
So that's for 1.3 million?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the rest of them?
So the site portion is the 700, the remaining portion is $715,000 in IAF.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Moving on, item two is an update and discover Cappell campaign with Ellie and... With Ellie?
Yep.
Okay. Good afternoon, council members. So good to see all of you. And for those who don't know who I am, I'm Ellie Braxton. I'm the president and CEO of the Cappell Chamber of Commerce at this time.
Who's that?
They know about me. Anyway, so I wanted to come in and give our council a report on where we are with Discover Cappell, the exciting stuff that we have coming up, and let you ask any questions on what you might need to know about Discover Cappell. As many of you know, we just started this program. It's called a destination marketing organization. We don't have a convention center here, so we can't call ourselves a convention and visitors bureau, because we're missing the convention part. But we do have what's called a destination marketing organization that is funded through the hotel occupancy tax. We started this program back in 2021. It has continued to grow. We're really excited about it, and again, some new stuff coming up to share with you guys. We have a Discover Cappell Advisory Council that we put together back a couple years ago. It is continuing to grow as well, and it is made up of our head volunteer, Daniel Armbruster, and from AAA, our marketing person. She is on staff for the Cappell Chamber of Commerce and for Discover Cappell. Of course, myself, Mindy Hurley participates, and then all five of the hotels are member of this council. I didn't put their names on there because the staff person changes periodically, so we, we do have representation from all five hotels on, on the advisory council. They meet with us every month and kind of go over what's going on in the industry and what they need and what we can do for them. We have different entities, or we did back in 2024, that we use to promote Cappell. What we found when we presented this to the city council back a few years ago is that we, we have several different venues to, or different means of marketing. We needed several different, because we have a lot of what we call day trippers here, people that just come for the day, spend their money, and then go back home. And Belmont Ice House is an actual advertising firm that we hired, and they have been marketing Cappell. They put together marketing campaigns depending on different things that are going on around the community, and I'll show you the KPIs and all of that. We have a social media manager that manages, they do about two or three posts a week. Daniel, do you know that number?
Four or five.
Just, yeah, four or five posts a week on things to do in Cappell, hotels to stay in, events that are happening that you want to participate in. And it's not just, I mean, it's, they do the art center, and they talk about the library, and they talk about, again, Daniel can probably answer more of those questions, and the restaurants and different activities that are going on in Cappell to get, again, what we call our day trippers in. We had contracted with a company called Hotel Resources, and their job, we decided last year to try this venue, and their job was solely to market the hotels. And so they were a telemarketing firm that was on the phone calling different organizations, different businesses here in Cappell, trying to find conventions and different things for here in Cappell. What we did find was that they were able to attract a lot of stuff here. We didn't have a venue big enough to hold a lot of it. So I'll go into that a little bit more in detail with you guys. I'll show you a report for them. We have a website manager that handles all of our website stuff. She handles all of our emails. She does all of our brochures and, and handles all the collaterals and everything that we do. You know, we say we want, like I did a convention with the Texas CBB, and she designed all the collaterals to go with that and all that stuff. And also if we say we want water bottles, then she'll design the stuff that needs to go in there. As we, as I was sharing earlier, when we first set out to do this, Belmont did a study of Cappell, and this is what we found. Our primary market, of course, is the fam, are the families on the go, 35 to 49, they are here for the day, they want something fun to do with their kids. And, and so they're looking for that. The secondary are active enthusiasts, people that love to bike, love to hike, love to kayak, things like that, we promote to them. And our tertiary audience, of course, are people like me that are looking for fun things to do with our grandkids. And so those are the primary areas that we, we target. Our paid advertising just last year, and again, I'll show you the KPIs, we, we made 54 million impressions just in our advertising through Belmont, Belmont Advertising Company. And out of those, we had what we call 4433,000 clicks where people saw the advertising and clicked on it to go into our website and all of that. This is how we do our digital advertising. We do programmatic advertising, which means like when you're on your social media or you're on Amazon and you look for a new dress, all of a sudden you start getting all that stuff about dresses on your social media, and if you go on the internet and start searching for something, all of a sudden you start getting all this stuff. That's what we call our programmatic advertising. So we do that. We also do paid SEO advertising, a search engine. Again, somebody says, I need a hotel in Dallas, they'll start getting ads, website ads and stuff from Discover Cappell. This is the actual report that Belmont gave us for the end of the year, just this past year. What we have, what we do know is we've seen a lot of increase in traffic in our special events, because those are the areas that they focus on. Our July 4th parade, our scare on the square, our vintage Christmas, anything else major like that that we have going on in the community, they're focused in those areas. And, and they do promotions like that, and then they'll, they're just doing like hotel ads and things like that during the off time. So this shows you again the amount of impressions that they made back in 2024, and the return on that, and the audiences that they were able to hit with that. I have the actual report that's got all the links if you want to go into the individual ones. I wasn't going to do that for the council, but you can go in and look at all the different individual events and how much attention it gets and all of that. Our social media, this is the organic social media. This is not our paid social media. We currently have about 2,300 followers. We reached 9,400 last year and had 90, excuse me, 94,000, had 9,400 engagements, which means they clicked on the ad or the promo that we did to go to our website just to learn about the event. The social media that we use currently is Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Again, this is all organic, display ads, carousel ads, we do story ads, do a lot of reels and things like that, do some videos on different, like farmers market and all of that, and kayaking. We've done a lot of different reels. We went over to the volleyball sports garden and did a big video on them, because they are one of the major volleyball courts here in North Texas. Our website, in 2024, we had 387,000 visits and 536,000 page views, which means they'll click on the page, but then they may go to, they'll click on the website and then go to several different pages. Again, our advertising, I wanted to talk to you about Hotel Resources, because again, we had contracted with them, because I had come to you guys and asked you for, okay, we want to increase the funding to pay for a staff person. And then we thought, let's try a contractor first to see how it works, and if that works, then we don't have to manage a staff person. We had a meeting with our hotels just recently and said, are you seeing a change? Because what they really need is weekend traffic. They get a lot of good during the week traffic, but it's the weekend traffic where they hurt the most. And they asked, I asked them if this was helping again, because we don't have a facility big enough to host a big convention. They said they were, the hotels did not see a benefit from Hotel Resources. They just flat out told us. What they did ask for directly was they want a person on staff that re, that works as the liaison for them to be that intercessor between them and the big businesses here. We all know, we've all had that experience, you can no longer just walk into the big warehouses and drop off a gift and say, hey, call us if you need something. There's no more walking to the doors. Hotel Resources couldn't, we have not been able to. The hotels told me they can't either. So they need someone to help build those relationships with the big businesses here to help for conventions and stuff during the week. But they also need someone to help keep them up to date on what's going on around Cappell, like what's special. Is there a baseball tournament in Grapevine that can use our hotels as overflow? Is there a pickleball tournament in Carrollton where they use our hotels? That sort of thing is what they've asked for. And so the chamber is moving forward with, once we got our new CEO in place, they will put a Discover Cappell staff person in place. So we ended our contract with Hotel Resources. We paid them about $48,000 for a year, and they booked about $60,000. So it just wasn't cost effective for us to do that. So we decided to move on. This is a report that they gave us. This is what they, they would meet with us every month and give us a report on what was out there and what they could, could, people they had talked to. But again, the hotels all agreed that we just, it wasn't cost effective, because it couldn't accommodate what Hotel Resources was funding. These were our year-end totals of what we have, we spent in 2024 on all of these different functions. The hotel, the market, telemarketing contractor, like I said, that will end. We will be hiring a person. We're going to try and starting them maybe part-time to see if it works. We'll see. That's for further discussion, but the board did vote to go ahead and hire a person. And so you see what it's cost us right now to maintain. I always keep kind of a contingency fund for us in case something comes up that, hey, we need a little bit of money to, to cover that. But last year, we implemented the gap funds as well. I'm still working with these hotels to get them to remember to ask us for it. And what gap funds means is if the hotel has an opportunity to book something, but they need to give the customer a little bit of a break on it, as long as it's an event that's going to benefit Cappell, then we give them what's called gap funds, and they have to apply for them, and they have to qualify for them. They've got qualifying needs and all that. And if they qualify for them, then we supplement that difference. Like if they need to give $5 off a hotel room just to get this booked, then they come to us and ask for that $5 back, and, and that gap fund pays that. So that shows you what we've spent so far in 2024. Our funds run with you guys from October to October, and so we fund, y'all fund half of it in October, November, and then the other half is in June. So these numbers here don't necessarily match what our annual budget is, but that's how we've spent in the year in 2024. That's what we spent. Any questions that you might have? We feel really good about Discover Cappell. We feel that it is working, especially on the day trippers. We, we really want to make it work on the weekend traffic for the hotels, and we feel that this is the best way to do that. Hotels right now, since I've been in Cappell, they have to get out and do that marketing themselves, where most convention and visitors bureaus have that person, like our person in place, that, like the person we're talking about, in place that is that liaison for the hotels. And, and so this person will, will fill that role. So we feel really good about where we're going to go in 2020, about '26. What questions do you have?
Anybody? Nothing? Jim?
How many hotels do we have coming online that aren't on the current list?
Two more that I'm aware of, but America or Mike could possibly answer that better.
Two more.
I know that they've started building, is it Homewood Suites, which is right behind True? They're owned by the same people. And it's at Spring Hill, which is right across the other side of Beltline. Those are the only two that I know of or are getting ready to come online. Home Two just opened, and they're on board for this.
And that one, oh, yeah, there's another one on Victory too.
That has started building.
The Victory Development.
That's the spring.
That's the one on the other side of Beltline.
Yes. As you turn into Cyrus orders by CBS.
So Spring Hill's going up, and then addition Victory Development, another one.
There's another one in Victory though, right?
I'm not sure the construction started or not.
No, no, no. But we've, so we've got three more of a benchway that'll be built.
Yeah, True was talking about that, because again, their owner owns Homewood, and she said they've started construction on that, as she thinks maybe to be next year before they're ready to.
Thanks, Mary. Ellie, my question is not exactly related to Discover Cappell. Given that we have challenge with elementary school, I know it's a school district thing, but as city leaders, can we leverage this program to advertise how Cappell is a great place to live?
The advertising that we do now kind of, well, like you see that, we believe that food comes from farmers and going to come to our farmers market, but we can do that. The, the agreement that we set up, we, Daniel and I just met with Belmont two weeks ago and told them that in their advertising like this, we wanted something that also addressed our hotels, that, you know, you're coming in for the, your mom and love, your mother-in-law is coming for the weekend. They wouldn't actually do that one, but that's the idea. There's a great hotel to put her in, you know, things like that. But, so you'll see them start doing more hotel advertising, but if we need for them, I'm trying to think the advertising that we do, I'm looking at Daniel, because he's just as familiar.
This was targeted toward the attracting people to come do day trips.
Yeah.
So their, their, what is it, your, your, not venues, your channels might not be appropriate for that message. And they would, I mean, it's very possible, but the, the channels that they're currently using might not be appropriate. So they would have to take a look at how they would modify that or go to a different advertising campaign. This was a pretty targeted, specific approach to, to the audience if they were, that we were going after. Does that, does that make sense?
Makes sense. Then, like, I think my point was, if we wanted to do something like attract people to come, consider living in Cappell, a lot of things that we would do would be along the lines of what the chamber has been doing. So there is some synergy there.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not saying we can take exactly what we have and, and use that, but, but we could, you know, share the costs.
My understanding, and I think Mike can probably answer this better than me, that this is paid for by the hotel occupancy tax. And the, and the role of the, the money is supposed to be spent on anything that's tourism. So come to live here is not tourism. So like, we can promote the hotels, and we can promote all the activities, and we can promote the restaurants and all of that. I don't know that we legally could promote come to live in Cappell, just because of the money that we're using to do that. You might, got any response to that?
No, you're, you're good. You're solid.
Anything else?
So I know you had mentioned something about hiring someone to now focus from the day trippers to weekend traffic and visits and stays and things like that. What is the determining factor that that is, is successful? Is it that the, will book more room nights in the hotels? That's the key metric that we're looking at?
That will be their primary focus. You know, like I said, Belmont is doing a great job of getting the day trippers here. We've seen our activities, you know, July 4th and scare and vintage fair traffic and all of that has gone up. But we, we need to get our heads on beds on the weekends, and so that will be that person's sole task. And like I said, most convention and visitors bureau have that person in place, and like Southwest, South Lake is a DMO as well, and they have a person on staff that that's what she does. And so it's just, we need to have that person.
So the cycle that I'm hearing is that, let's say that someone comes on, on staff to do that, we get, we book more rooms, more heads and beds, as you say, we generate more hotel occupancy tax, and it kind of feeds itself.
Yes.
Is, is that the, the objective of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly. Okay.
Yeah, that's the goal.
I'm sure you're concerned there's a lot of these school and college sports, those meets happen during the weekends, so maybe that's a, that's a focus area for getting more heads and beds during the weekends.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a lot of stuff going on around us. We always promote this, because we're the cruise ship, and there's all these excursions going on around us, staying in our hotels while you're, you know, taking that trip. But we need to have a better focus on, and that's what the hotels specifically outlined, because they've worked in other communities, and that's what they've had, is a person that they can sit down with once a month and say, mm, eclipse is coming up, and we're going to have a big rush on people coming into Cappell, let's start marketing it now, where we picked up that ball almost at the last minute. And so this person would be in the know in advance, there's going to be a cheer tournament in Irving next, you know, next month, and hey, let's start marketing to that organization, to varsity, whatever they're called, and tell them, hey, we're right here, and it's cheaper to stay here than it is in Irving. So that's what that person will be doing.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, so.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your support.
Mary, just real quickly, this will be the last time that Ellie presents to the council. Well, I mean, I think it's appropriate that, you know, some recognition. I know we did it to save the city.
Yeah, and that's very true, but a remiss on me. Ellie, thank you for your, all your leadership that you've given the council or the, the chamber, and consequently, the, the city of Cappell. You know, we're much, I think back to when we started this program right after COVID, and we're considerably further along than we were back then, and it was a difficult four years, but thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Looking for, I'm sure you're not leaving us entirely, so looking forward to seeing you around at least at some of the events. And again, thanks for all your, your time and energy that you put into the, the chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got about an hour to go, and we have three topics left. I'm just kind of keeping the, the watch on, under eye. Item number C is a discussion regarding the e-bikes with Police Chief Danny Barton.
And Mayor, just real quick, on the health and wellness, I'd rather the staff do the last item, and then if you have time for us, great, if not, we can do it another time, but just in the interest of respecting their time.
Sure. We will suspend the rules and change the order. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I've been asked to come speak about the electric bike regulations. We've gotten a few complaints from citizens about the, the way some of these, I'll say students are, are riding their bikes in our city. But, so I want to just kind of be clear on what the, the law is and where the restrictions are, and what we can do and what we can't do, because the legislature was really clear. The first thing they did was they made electric bikes follow to the, all the laws around bicycles, regular bikes. So an electric bike, if it's out on the road, it's got to follow the rules of the road, just like a bicyclist would. That's already in place. We've pulled over kids on e-bikes for running stop signs and things like that, and educated them up. And so, so everything that applies to a bicycle is going to apply to an e-bike. The one thing that I will say in our ordinance is, is people 14 and under have to wear a helmet when they operate a bicycle. We may want to consider putting e-bikes into our ordinance as well with the bicycles on the helmet ordinance. So that's just, that's one thing that we can fix. I'll tell you the regulations set by, this is what the, they say the local authorities may not prohibit the operation of an electric bike on, on our roads. So we cannot prohibit electric bikes on any of our streets. And we cannot prohibit them in an area in which the operation of a non-electric bicycle is permitted. So everywhere a bicycle can go, an electric bike is going to go. And they're saying we cannot override that. The one exception, they said unless the area is a path that is not open to motor vehicles and has a natural surface, so it doesn't have any improvements to the surface, so like a, a walking path, a hiking path, maybe the, the trails down at the back, something like that, you can prohibit e-bikes on those trails if you choose to do so. Now, the next thing the legislature did is they said the local authority can prohibit the operation of a bicycle on a sidewalk, but that's going to be all bicycles. And then you can establish speed limits for bicycles on paths, set aside for the exclusive operation of bicycles in other paths on which bicycles may be operating. So we can put speed limits, some of the cities around us have put a speed limits up on their paths at fifteen miles an hour. I don't know how enforceable that is. I don't, I don't have an officer with a speed gun out in the trails. But we, that's something the legislature says you can do if you'd like. I just, I just don't know if that's where you want to go. But those are the, so everything is following under the bicycle law and then those are the can and cannot dos. And, and from there, I guess, I just want, if you tell me what you want to do, me and Bob will get together and we'll have fix, fixing ordinance accordingly. So any questions?
Don?
So is there, is there by definition something different between a bike and an e-bike in the law or, or?
Yes, so.
Okay, so they are different.
So an e-bike, electric bike, there's three classes of electric bikes. A class one is the, it's, they all have 750 volt batteries on them. The class one, the battery only kicks in if you're pedaling and it can go up to 20 miles an hour. The class two, you don't have to pedal and you can make it run up on the handlebars and then two can go up to 20 miles an hour. And then they have a class three, which can get up to 28 miles an hour, but you have to be over 15 years old to ride those. And so how do we know which one is which? They're supposed to put a label on them that says class one, class two, class three. I will tell you, there are e-bikes that are outside of those classes that are much, much faster, but we as the police would treat them as electric mopeds or electric motorcycles. And that, as far as I know, the Attorney General has never ruled on that yet, but I'm sure it's going to come up because it's, we're seeing more of them. So there are e-bikes that'll get up to between 40 and 60 miles an hour.
Okay, so they're not automatically covered by bike rules or anything?
Just those three categories.
Okay, those are, those are the same, but everything else would have to fall under some other, okay, so there's a different definition. I would have just assumed those were just bikes, but I didn't realize that they were actually defined as some, something different. Thanks.
Rihanna?
Thank you for that information. I like the idea of making it consistent with regard to helmets for bikes and e-bikes. But then as far as, you know, I know you're looking for a direction, if there's anything else we should do, I'm curious as to, just to have a conversation around what are the main concerns and any thoughts on, I guess, how we address that? I mean, I think, I presume maybe on, like you said, on the speed limit, I think the problem is how do you detect that, right? So putting that on there, I don't know, would be very effective. But are we having issues of like e-bikes on sidewalks that are an issue or anything else?
So we've gotten complaints of, and I say complaints, I'm not getting any more complaints on e-bikes than I get on regular bikes. Right? Regular bikes plus stop signs and breaks, rules of the road all the time. We have gotten, I know Patrol told me they recently got one, one was upset that the e-bikes were allowed to be used in the parks. And so, but we allow bikes out there, so we're going to have to allow that. Again, we, we've had, recently we've had one e-bike accident and it was a kid on a sidewalk and he was late to school, so he's got the full 20 on. And a car pulls out in the intersection to take a right. The student saw the car, he just didn't have the skill level, he didn't hit it at 20, he was slowing down, he just ran out of room before it fully braked. And that's the only, I'll say, accident that we have documented. I've had people call and say, you know, I was walking down the street and an e-bike hit me, but I've also had people call me and say a bicycle hit me. You know, so we're not getting overrun. The only concern is the skill level of these kids with so many bikes just don't match. I mean, they're falling, they're scraping themselves up. But they do it on bikes too, so that's, if that answers your question.
Yes, that does, thank you so much.
Okay, Gabrielle Mash and the VJ.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation and actually Brianna asked the question that I, I had, which is what are the top two complaints from our residents? Going back to the, the helmet for under 14, I'm supportive of that, but how do you enforce that, Chief? When you stop someone, it's not like they have a driver's license on them.
So we pull up and go, how old are you?
Scared, scared.
And generally we'll, you know, I don't, I don't know the last time that we, we. But I mean, literally that's how we do it. If you don't look, I mean, if you look close, we're probably going to bypass you, but if it's obvious, we, we, we usually go to, so the parents can be cited for that. And so we take them to the parents and say, if you don't correct this, then the ticket don't give you, not junior, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, we have school resource officers at every school now. Do we have any opportunity to educate through the school system, you know, what are the things you should be, you know, careful about riding e-bikes? I know we're going to have more coming up because e-bike is getting very popular nowadays.
So, so we are working on that piece, on the education piece, because some of the students realize, oh, there's bikes faster than the one mom and dad bought me. And they want the faster ones. And some of the students are coming up to the SROs and asking what are the, what are the rules? And the SROs are telling them. Not, I'm not going to say all of them come up and ask, but we do need to get that out that, especially to the parents that, you know, if you go out and buy this off-road e-bike that does 48 miles an hour and you don't have a driver's license, you know, we might be the next Attorney General opinion, but we're, we're, that's just irresponsible to let, you know, kids on bikes that fast, so. But yeah, education, I talked to our SROs today, they were all at the range and they were in the, in the field, I stopped and talked to them about this topic and they're all in agreement, so.
So within two, three months, we'll have some kind of lightweight route in school?
I think they're going to go faster than that.
Okay.
School will be out here a couple of those.
I had, Jim, is there any appetite in raising the helmet limit to 16? I agree with making them apply to the electric bikes as well. Anybody think about the 14 versus 16?
I'm all four.
I am too.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, why would you raise the age?
Because, say you have an unfortunate accident and it's, it's, it's your fault as a driver. The kid could potentially be saved from traumatic brain injury.
Okay, no, I'm not, I'm not understanding what y'all are saying. You're saying you want to raise the age from 14 to 16? So I'm saying why wouldn't we keep it at 14? For the same age?
I got, I'm sorry.
I'm with you, Mark.
Oh, okay, you know what, I understood that too. Okay, no, I'd want to keep it at 14. I'm sorry, I think I was thinking what you were thinking.
Why, why do you want to raise it to 16?
No, you're right, you're right.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I keep it at 14.
While angels will ride, you're part of the.
I don't know, just go up to the age where license is required. At that point, you've got most of them that are going to be on, on bicycles. At 16, they're going to switch over to powered vehicles. That was my thought.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
16 and under.
16 and under, yeah. Raising it.
Oh, okay, okay. So I didn't understand the question.
Oh, did I say it badly?
You said, no, 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 I understood it badly.
Yeah, you're saying 16 and under, not 14 and under.
I understood it badly.
Okay, then I am thinking what you're thinking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, then I still.
Should we all agree? I didn't even know. That's a question.
Is, is that enough for, to ask them to put that, when they make the change? What I was asking was, since we're going to be, we're going to be looking at a change to the ordinance, shall we also consider raising that age from 14 to 16? Where helmets are required?
Required 16 and under.
Yes.
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 Quick question, on that topic, at what age do you start ninth grade? Because I think when you start ninth grade or 10th grade, if there's only one grade that has to wear a helmet to the school, they might get picked on, so.
So, at least we're saving a life. I'm all for health and wellness. And safety, sorry.
Well, if they're getting picked on, they'd wear the helmet.
Generally, the 15-year-olds are going to be going to the ninth grade, so they'll be.
So maybe that's the reason why we start at 14. So you have until eighth grade and then once you're ninth grade.
No, I don't. Remesh, my daughter's 15 and she's a sophomore. And if she was riding a bike, I would want her wearing a helmet. So, that's just me.
And Chief, any surrounding cities, do you know what's the limitation? 16, 14, 13, where?
Right, I didn't want to interrupt, but most of the cities, so the state of Texas defines a child as anyone 16 or younger. And so they just put that in there, most cities have, you can't be a child on a bike. So it's 16 and under. I can't find a city that doesn't have 16 and under that requires helmets. Like we're the lowest right now that I can find.
So I have a question, on the streets where we have a dedicated bike lane, are the bikes confined to the bike lane? They're not, are they?
I believe they have to use the bike lane along that road.
Okay, okay, so they are confined to that? And then the other day I saw a kid on an e-bike on Denton Tap and he was going at a speed consistent with the balance of traffic. I mean, literally, it's the right lane, just, you know, having a ball. Is that, is that considered a legal use of a bike? Yeah, that's what I was.
As long as he's in the right lane.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That makes a difference?
Yeah, so you could, any cyclist could ride down Denton Tap, but they got to be in the right lane.
Gotcha, okay, thanks, Chief.
We have that problem on Parkway all the time.
Brianna?
Okay, so for clarification, because I had that same question for on Parkway where we have dedicated lanes. So bikes and e-bikes are supposed to stay in the bike lane and they're not to be riding on the sidewalk?
I don't know that you, no, you can still ride on the sidewalk because we don't have an ordinance against that.
Okay.
We'd prefer them to be in the bike lane.
Right. But I think, is that what you were referring to?
Well, I was just thinking if there's a bike lane, then could they be in the other part of the street?
Oh, the other part of the street, okay.
As opposed to the bike lane, or are they confined to the bike lane?
Okay, they should be confined to the bike lane, if there is a bike lane, not in the rest of the street.
Because it's still the right.
Can we, I don't think it says that though. Bob, you have an opinion on that? I thought that, I personally thought that they were.
I'm never going to ride my bike in the sidewalk because it's not made for bicycles, it's made for pedestrians.
Well, yeah, but when you're riding your bike with their, with the designated bike lane, do you ride in the, the bike lane or do you ride on the?
Most cyclists tell you it's dangerous to ride in the bike lane.
So most people ride on the.
Because people bark and they open their doors and they don't watch and at least if you're out in the lane, you can avoid traffic and you can avoid people on the side of the road. When I ride in Capel, I ride on Benton Creek and I ride on Purple. And then I ride on McCarter and then I'm in town. Or I, I ride on Freeport. Cyclists are taught to ride in the right-hand side of the road. Have a light on your left-hand side, a light on your person, a light on the front of your bike. If you do those things, you probably won't get hit. And don't do something stupid. I will tell you, I will not ride on Champion Trail ever again because of the e-bikes. The people, a lot of people that bike e-bikes, fighting because they're not fit, they don't like, they got the motor assist on them, they're not cyclists and they can't handle that bike at that speed. 20 miles an hour on bikes is pretty fast. I can barely hold that anymore because of my age. When I was younger, I could ride a lot faster. 20 miles an hour on a bicycle is fast. And if you don't have the bike skills, you will fall down, no question. Because in a lot of places where they ride down, there are trails that were in meander and on Champion Trail, which meanders, it is dangerous because there's blind corners and those bikes pop up and those e-bikes and they're in, I'm coming. I think Brad, Brad and I used to see, I used to see Brad Reed all the time. He used to be with cyclists, but the e-bikes are so bad that I won't even ride on them anymore, it's dangerous.
Chief, in the, um, missed, kind of what you've heard today and on potential changes to the ordinance that you'll bring back, is there anything else you recommend that we might be missing in this area to align with other cities or other safety measures?
No, I think, I think the ball's in the PD's court on the education piece. So I think I've got what I need here and we'll take care of the education piece.
Council, if you talk to any of your colleagues out there from other cities, some of the, I will tell you right now, some cities are doing some crazy things. I don't know if they're legal or not. Highland Park and University Park, you have to be 18 to ride a e-bike. I don't think that's legal, but they, they've got, and San Antonio treats them like those motor scooters and skateboard, motorized skateboards and everything, they've lumped all of them together. Just so you're aware of that, we'll do what we think's appropriate here, but I think some people have overreached in some other cities. When I was looking at this, when I was talking to Danny, so. Just because they're doing something in Highland Park or University Park, they have a different set of rules there. I was telling them, they still have drunken cars, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny?
I was going to ask, what, what did we, what was decided just now? But for clarification, what's, what's coming back to us?
He's going to be bringing an ordinance back that's going to.
Is he going to align the bikes and e-bikes?
Yep.
Is that what we're doing? We're done already?
Align. Well, the state ordinance, state law pretty much already says you have to do that, so we're just going to align our ordinance to comply with that.
Okay, that's what I thought it was.
And you don't really have any nature trails where bikes are used. That, I think that that's permissible, uh, there's like in Irving, they have a, a mountain bike trail, you can use an e-bike, and that in ordinance.
All right, we're going to move over item D to item E. This is presentation of the water conservation dashboard from Jerry Young and James Meyer.
Good evening.
Hey, Jerry.
Mayor and Council. Tonight, we will be presenting the water dashboards. My name is Jerry Young, I am the Business Analyst within Strategic Financial Engagement and this is James Meyer, he is the Assistant Director of Public Works. So for the brief agenda, today. So for the brief agenda, um, today I'm gonna talk about the history that led to the creation of the dashboards, where to access, and then we will review the dashboard, and James is gonna add in some commentary. So jumping into the history, um, during the summer of twenty twenty-three, we endured over thirty days of a hundred degree heat, that was greater than a hundred degrees, and as a result, water demand surged, causing us to near the limit of our consumption, set with Dallas Water Utility, or DWU. We have a water conservation plan that triggers us to restrict usage for residents, businesses, and even ourselves as a city. So the impact is felt throughout the community until we can get that consumption down. This led to great stress on us as a city, uh, as we brushed up against that limit, we had to grapple with the possibility of needing to increase our demand from DWU. So as we made it through the heat wave, we began budgeting for that potential increase in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And going through that experience, we saw the need to be able to quickly monitor consumption, which led to the creation of this dashboard by a couple of members of our Enterprise Solutions team. And they probably saw more of me than they were anticipating for a few months. But, um, if it wasn't for Marion O'Ginchi and Paula V. Columncar, we wouldn't be presenting this dashboard tonight, so a special thank you to them from me. So you'll be able to access the dashboard from the City of Capel website, and it'll be stored under the utility billing tab. And this is what it'll look like, it'll just display a welcome paragraph stating the purpose of the dashboard, as well as how to use the interactive graphs. Um, although you can access the dashboard or the website through a mobile device, I find it easiest through a desktop or a laptop. And I'll explain the graphs in detail, but first, I just want to walk you through the rest of the website. Towards the bottom of the page, it displays the terms and definitions, which explains what is consumption, which is just your water usage. Uh, violations, which is water used in violation of our conservation plan, as well as MGD, which is the maximum water the city can draw from Dallas Water Utility. The rest explains the service types, which is the grouping of water accounts based on their usage. So you'll have residential, which is your single-family homes, commercial, businesses, the government is the city-owned properties, and multifamily, you can think about apartments, condos, um, HOAs and POAs, that refers to the common areas throughout the neighborhoods, and then the fire, which represents the designated, uh, meters for fire protection services. So now to drill into the charts, um, if you could, please, just notice the number in the corner, uh, it's gonna help you keep track of which graph we're talking about as we drill through all four and their drill-down capacity. And then we'll review all the graphs, and then we'll open it up for questions. So this graph is the previous day's consumption, broken out by service type. So just as we just spoke about, we have residential, commercial, and it's also displaying the consumption, which is in blue, and the violations, which is in orange. Now currently, the violations is deemed as any consumption greater than a property's winter average on a non-watering day. So for this particular day, the only, the, for this particular day, single-family residents were the only ones that weren't supposed to be watering. So that's why they're the sole category with violations. And we are exploring adding a buffer to this threshold, and as a part of that effort, we will, that'll be what you see tonight brought forward by the new tech learners. So, and that presentation will go on during regular session. So if you were on your desktop, you would right-click on the graph, or if you're on a mobile device, you would press and hold, and an option to show as a table would come up. And this is how it displays, it's that same data, it just breaks out to show you in a table view. And this may be a little bit difficult to view now, but when you're on laptop or mobile device, it'll be your entire screen, so it'll be a little easier for everyone to view. Now, this next chart is the historical su- historical consumption for the entire year by month. And you can see the upward trend for the year twenty twenty-three in that green line, and its peak in August. And now I'm gonna turn it over to James for some commentary.
Thanks, Jerry. So I just wanted to take a minute to discuss the impact that our conservation measures, uh, implemented last year, specifically the mandatory two-day-a-week watering schedule from May first to September thirtieth, and how it affected our water system. So if you recall, uh, we experienced twenty-three one-hundred-plus-degree days in July and August of twenty twenty-four. August is typically when we closely monitor our water volumes, as we often approach our maximum daily, uh, allowances, uh, of eighteen and a half million gallons per day. As Jerry mentioned, in twenty twenty-three, we had over thirty days of a hundred-degree weather, uh, where we had our maximum daily limit on nine days, one day in July and eight days in August of twenty twenty-three. However, in twenty twenty-four, we believe the new watering schedule did play a significant role in reducing that demand, as you can see the difference, especially in August and September. So factors that potentially impact the daily consumption year over year are the actual daily high temperatures, rainfall, uh, the implementation of the tiered water rate structure, which went into effect last February, increased communication with residents encouraging water conservation, as well as the ordinance that went into effect in July. That said, we do believe that the residents largely adhered to the two-day-a-week restrictions, and as a result, we never reached our maximum allocation in twenty twenty-four. The closest we got was within a hundred, or one-point-seven million gallons per day, and that was in July, uh, July sixteenth. And we actually only had three days where we used over sixteen million gallons a day, a significant change from what we saw in twenty twenty-three.
And the year twenty twenty-five will be displayed once we roll out the dashboard, but just as the same as the previous chart, all you have to do is press and hold or right-click on a desktop, and the table function will appear as well. So for the next chart, we have the previous five days total consumption, and during this time of year, sticking around four million gallons a day. And we feel like this graph will allow for greater transparency throughout the community during those times of restrictions. And again, this also has the option to view as a table. And for the fourth and final chart, this is the same data as chart three, just broken out into service type. So you have residential, commercial, government. And this also has the same capabilities as the other charts. With the option to view it as a table. And with that, uh, we encourage citizens to sign up and take more control over their water usage by signing up for the My H2O Water Portal. Uh, it allows them to monitor their own water usage, set leak alerts, and even more. And that can also be found under the City of Capel's utility billing page. And lastly, at no charge to residents, they can schedule an evaluation of their sprinkler system, which allows them to water with efficiency and protect water resources into the future. And it's easy to access, as it is also under the utility billing tab of the city website. So in summary, uh, we feel the dashboard is a valuable tool for empowering residents with real-time data on a city level, resulting in increased transparency during times of conservations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin?
Uh, gentlemen, thank you all for the presentation, really appreciate that. So, um, obviously, we're seeing pretty real-time data. How often does that data refresh, and, uh, is it, is it daily, hourly type thing? What does that look like?
So for charts, one, it will refresh, uh, actually, it will refresh every week.
Every week, okay, cool. Okay, very nice. That's awesome. And, and, but it's all based on real-time data?
Yes, it'll be the previous weeks and what is, and the historical data for the larger consumption as well.
That's fantastic, all right, thanks, guys.
I was gonna be snarky and ask if Jim had his own column for his yard, but I didn't.
That's my joke.
Yes, yes, it's a subject. But I will be, I will be getting an appointment with the sprinkler guy.
So I have a, I did have a question concerning, I had the evaluation done, and it turns out I had lots of deficiencies, including I was way over-watering and watering way too much and all sorts of stuff. Are we gonna have a summary from the M and M Irrigation Company on overall how, how things are looking, uh, in their evaluations?
Yes, I think that we can provide that and, and have that available for you, yes.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, like, his evaluation of, of mine, my yard was really bad. So I felt really bad, I got embarrassed, you know, he was like, well, you're, you know, like, every other sprinkler head was, was leaky, so.
So another resident's get their own individual report, as you know. I mean, the, the individuals get their report right at the end of the evaluation.
And so is he gonna summarize that on a citywide basis, or, or, for, for you guys?
Uh, yes, I believe that he is, I have not seen that Renee has been coordinating with him, but I believe that he will have those, uh, going forward, yes.
Do you know if he's gonna be able to come up with a estimated amount of water saved as a result of his studies?
Yeah, because the individual ones does have the totals on it, so yes, they will have the run total, yes.
Okay.
What, what is a, your own personal water tank, Ron?
He needs an elevated tank.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Okay, great job, great, this will be very helpful, I think, for everybody. Although I would just encourage you, and the portal's actually really good for monitoring your individual usage, and I think y'all have got that nailed, and, uh, but this is more of a macro view, right? Just to be able to see what the whole community's doing on top of the portal showing you what you're individually doing.
Exactly.
And you're not intending to merge these?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, cool. Yeah, that portal's awesome.
Yeah, I agree.
Did you?
Yeah, I just want to follow up, how many residents have signed up for online portal that are using today?
You know, I don't have that number, but I can get it to you.
Thank you.
Brianna?
So with regard to, like, I was thinking about the macro view for the HOA, um, I guess, are we going to let the HOAs know that's something they can be looking at? And I guess, from that standpoint, is there a way for us to maybe help them or identify issues? Or, um, yeah, just thinking about how we can partner with the HOAs on making sure that we're following maybe restriction timeframes or things like that.
So, wanna make sure I understand you, you're asking, are we gonna be notifying HOAs that we have this dashboard available?
Right, well, you, so that, yeah, the information there is for the HOA, right? It's a macro view.
Yes.
So will the HOAs know this is something that they can look at?
Yes, well, we plan on touching all avenues of communications by working with Hannah's team, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, the message will be related to that.
Because that's for, like, the common areas and things like that, and so, um, I guess, finding a way for us to partner with them on that, because I know that there's been questions that have come up during, um, times when we have water restrictions. And so, you know, just being able to figure out how we work with our HOAs.
Yes.
Versus neighborhoods that don't have that.
Remesh, Kevin has a question for her, and then you.
It, it's a piggyback directly. Are the sprinkler evaluations that are, that are available for individual homeowners and, and property owners, is that available for HOAs, eh, like?
I don't know.
I don't believe that they're currently, I think they're just for individual residences.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was.
Good question.
Remesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, understand that we have the maximum limit that we can draw from Dallas Water Utility. I- is there any ability for us to save, like, one week or one month worth of water anywhere in Capel?
No, no, our storage capacity is less than that one-day total usage. If you add up all of our ground storage tanks and the elevated tanks, it's less than that, so.
I- is it because we don't have the real estate to, to, to store the water? What's the challenge there?
Well, that would be a very large tank to do that, so very caught, you know, it'd be very expensive to do that, but also, you have to monitor the chlorine levels, and you have to keep all the chemistry correct and that. So if you're holding that and keeping it stagnant, your chlorine levels are gonna have to be, uh, regulated much more rigorously to do that, as opposed to having it flow through and, and having that smaller residence time.
Thank you.
So to Brianna's question, perhaps when we have our next HOA president's meeting, Mike? I'm not sure when that's scheduled. Usually.
They're the ones that schedule it.
I, I would love to have them present to that group and talk about the, this whole topic. Because I agree that, my, my unofficial opinion is, eh, the median, or the HOAs are really bad at wasting water.
They have challenges with water utilization.
Well, it's, 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 they're typically not monitored very closely.
I think appoint Gary Tenell, who ended up that, who moved out of Capel.
Oh.
So I'm just letting you know that.
Thank you.
Because he's, he's my neighbor.
My only point, if there's any way we could get the HOAs to have access to their usage on the portal, I think that'd be very helpful. So they could actually see their individual usage like any resident.
I think they should be able to.
They can?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I, I just bring up a question, he's already got it solved.
I'll go work, let me go to work on that one.
So during the state of the city, uh, we were using words like thirty percent reduction in, in peak water usage. Honestly, I'm not too far off, so. I think that was about right, so, thank you, appreciate that. Anybody have any other questions?
Great work.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Jerry.
Thank you, James.
All right, uh, do, do our Health and Wellness Subcommittee want a report?
Well, we could. We're down to sixty-six percent of our team here.
She says she'll be right back.
Well, she's, she's got the intro. Mayor, what do you mean?
Maybe I can start distributing the material.
Yeah, that's great.
There you go. We're gonna move on to item D, which is report from the City Council Wellness Subcommittee.
All right, okay.
Which is.
Just just one.
Uh, take one and, and pass risk, please.
Do y'all have the one pager and me? Packet?
Thank you, that's fine. I figured you would do that. Thank you. Okay, so I figured we'll start the conversation. Does everybody get one of these?
Yes.
Everybody have, everybody should have. Set some paper, so there should be two of these.
It's coming, it's coming.
Thank you. Um. Okay. So, um, take a few minutes to talk about what health and wellness used to be in Capel, and then, kind of where we're at. At the direction of, um, at the request of the mayor, he asked if we would put together a subcommittee. Why you want those, please? If we would put together a subcommittee to look at health and wellness, um, for the community, and to see whether there were opportunities and/or gaps, um, for us to address kind of health and wellness as a whole. I don't know the exact year, but I'm gonna say around two thousand nine or so, maybe two thousand nine, twenty-ten. In the past, we had a Health and Wellness Committee, and we, we should get, so you should have, um, pillars of wellness, and then you should have two different, um, pillars, two different graphs. And then you should have this one. Does everybody have? Is that ready? Yes, okay, bless you, okay. Um, and so. Huh? I know, I know. So back. I know, I know, so back, so around, like I said, two thousand nine, twenty-ten, several of you out there were part of it, um, where we had a Health and Wellness Committee, and we looked at, six different pillars around nutrition, nutrition, physical, exercise, um, mental, emotional, spiritual, and religious, um, or maybe I said spiritual twice, but we had six different pillars where we looked at, from a Health and Wellness standpoint, and we brought together different partners around the city. The goal at the time was to kind of see if there were opportunities for us in the community, and to kind of also, at that time, there started to be conversations around twenty-thirty, and, um, we, we wanted to see kind of what the inventory looked like at the time, um, I know everyone's looking at their pages here in front of them, it's a lot of information that Kevin's gonna address here in a minute. But, um, all that to say is, we brought people around the table, we had partners like the Chamber, the Y, um, private businesses, several of you were at the table, staff, um, and the hope at that time was that the city would have funding, which at the time, our budget included twenty-five thousand, it was dedicated to Health and Wellness, and, we were hoping that at some point, that would be maintained by some other party in the city. From that, I think, um, stemmed some of our Health and Wellness, um, like expos, um, we started to look at what our parks had, we started to talk about twenty-thirty, that went on for several years. And we also partnered with the school district around Health and Wellness, because they also have someone who sits on their, um, PTO that is part of SHAC, which is a Student Health Advisory Committee. So, there were a lot of conversations, we talked about, um, restaurants, what was on their menus, we had chiropractors, and we had all these conversations. From that, um, we also looked to see if there were any potential ordinances that we might want to adopt, and we talked about a non, a no-spoken ordinance, cause a lot of cities at that time, I think a lot of them still have it, we never ended up passing one. We also were looking at cellphone usage, and that was taken care of by the state, and so, um, the, the, that particular group kind of shifted away, um, to It's Time Texas. And so it went from a very large group of people that was facilitated by Randy, who y'all know, and then kind of shifted to, let's do more of an It's Time Texas, let's have some challenges, let's get the seniors involved, let's get people moving. We had a day where it was like businesses and schools all moved together at the same time, um, Kevin came out to the schools on many occasions, his team to, to do exercising, and so, the, the focus shifted along the way, so twenty-thirty came, Health and Wellness was at the top of the list, and was definitely something that was prioritized by staff. Twenty-forty, which I think several of you were also on that committee, it didn't seem to be a priority, and, not that it wasn't a priority from the standpoint of people weren't interested in Health and Wellness, but we kind of took it as, we're already doing a really good job. At that point, our parks were being finished, we were finishing our trails and connecting, um, we were already doing a lot of things, um, the, the bike lanes were already being addressed, and so, as a result, it really wasn't part of twenty-forty. Now, fast forward to where we are today, and, um, one of our neighboring cities had a challenge online, um, and I think it was just with Capella.
It was Southlake.
Southlake and Capella, was there any other cities involved?
Southlake, uh, oh, gosh, no, it was Southlake, Keller, and, and Capella.
Yeah.
Okay, Southlake, Keller, and Capella, um, we did not win, um, I don't know that we all knew exactly what was happening at the time, or that it was well-publicized, and that's fine. But it kind of sparked the conversation around, hey, do we really need to, do we need to think about Health and Wellness again, and what does that look like? And is there also possibly some funding, because we've had conversations with some of our neighboring hospitals in the past, in fact, at one point, Los Colinas Medical Center was a big, um, contributor, and was, uh, big at helping at what we were doing, and Children's Health had come forward and, I think, talked to the mayor at one point and said, we might have some money that could be dedicated to Health and Wellness. So from that, Kevin, Remesh, and I took this as a, um, subcommittee, and decided to kind of look at it and figure out, what does Health and Wellness look like today? And what's the conversation that we should have around this table, so with that said, Kevin?
Thank you, Brianna, uh, and thank you for that background on that, so, what we did was, we got together and we decided, uh, you know, what does Health and Wellness look like in Capella today? And so, what we did was, is, um, you know, Brianna told us about the six original pillars that we had, and we decided, well, let's, let's take another look at that and see, you know, well, you know, what are, you know, time has, has gone past since then, and, and are there more pillars, are there things we, we should consider? Well, we actually came up with a list of ten, and so if you look at your charts right here, you'll see those are the ten pillars that we came up with, uh, surrounding Health and Wellness. And what we also decided, uh, was that, before we decided to like, take steps to move forward about making changes, we wanted to do basically a wellness inventory of the city. And so what we, what we decided was, is what are things that the, the city directly are, are doing, you know, what, uh, initiative they have, what programs do we have, you know, what, whether that is like potentially at the core, or just events that we do? And then, you know, what does our private businesses also, uh, touch as well? And so what you're gonna see is, is the color coding is, we have the green, we have the three green, and the green represents a higher, uh, basically higher level of touch points that are addressed in those pillars. The, the yellow is a little bit more of like, you know, medium touch points, not quite as many as the green, and then the red, which we have the one, uh, red is the least amount of touch points that we have, uh, around the city that are touching those pillars. So, and you guys can kind of go through that, so, and one of the charts, uh, you have, basically you have all the stuff the city does, and then the things that we identify from private business. And then, the other one that you have, uh, some of the, the city manage, uh, manage and partnership touch points as well, so a couple different graphs right there, and then we also have it in, uh, this kind of nice graphical form that we did not do, uh, someone that is well, that are skilled than us put that together, so. But that was a real thing for us, was that we needed to take a look and say, well, what, what does Health and Wellness look like today? Look at that, and then we also had some, I don't know, like some, some, um, some thoughts about like, you know, what does Health and Wellness look like today in terms of looking at twenty-forty? Was Health and Wellness not addressed in twenty-forty because the citizens thought we were already doing a good job? Or was it because there were other things that took priority that kind of replaced Health and Wellness? And to be very honest, we're not really sure, you know, like why Health and Wellness seemed to be such a higher priority in the twenty-thirty plan versus the twenty-forty plan. Uh, so Tracy was our, our staff liaison on this, and helped organize, um, a, a lot of this, and so there were a couple things that we talked about, we talked about asking our citizens, uh, you know, what that might look like, so, as you guys know, um, in part of reaching out to our citizens, we do the happiness surveys, um, there, and which is a part of the twenty-forty plan. So we kind of had the discussion about maybe potentially including some Health and Wellness questions in our next survey that goes out, so that's a potential avenue to answer that initial question, you know, is Health and Wellness still a priority, or did the priorities just change a little bit, or did it, or did they think, oh, we're, status quo is great, let's just keep doing what we're doing, that's why we're not bringing it to the forefront, so. But we do, we do think it's important that we answer that question. The other thing that we talked about was the It's Time Texas Challenge, do we want to have a community that is challenge, challenge-based when it comes to Health and Wellness? Do we want the gamification of that? Or is just having the amenities and, and health and services available to everyone, does that satisfy, um, our, uh, you know, basically the, uh, us addressing what Health and Wellness looks like? So, we're not quite sure what that looks like either, just in terms of, do we want to gamify, do we want to just have those services available to people, so. Um, and then we, we talked about funding as well, is, um, you know, in the past, there, there was money available with the hopes that a, you know, maybe a, a third-party entity might be created and, and take Health and Wellness going forward. So we had questions about whether council has a desire to earmark some funds to continue Health and Wellness initiatives, and I think that we need to find out what our citizens feel like first, uh, you know, to maybe consider doing that, and it might take a, take a little money to fund some of that, we're not sure, might be a chicken and egg type of thing. The last thing that we talked about, Mayor, and this is specifically for you, was researching the Children's Health, uh, questions as well, and what we found was, is that Children's Health offers a, a ton of, programs that are available free of charge to our citizens to come out and educate, inform, um, and, and almost like kind of tag along to certain initiatives that we might have, so I think about our, you know, our Chamber of Commerce does their, uh, Health and Wellness Expo, that it's coming up, where they do the fire truck pull and that. So potentially Children's Health could come out and do, um, have information, uh, available to citizens about certain Health and Wellness initiatives for kids as well, so.
They were actually also willing to fund part of that, so that was part of where they're.
And, and that's what, they basically told us that, that all of that is free, and, and so that's, there wouldn't be any additional funding requirements on us, so they come out and do that as part of their advocacy efforts and as well, and I'm sure, they also said, you know, there's parts about like, if services are available, you know, they take insurance, all that stuff, so, there's that. So with that, with that being said though, I do wanna kick it over to Remesh to kind of like, bring it all home and kind of summarize everything that we, that we put together.
Thank you, Kevin, uh, so you, you all heard the background from Brianna, and, and the kind of research that the subcommittee did, to bring all of this information, so the, the point is to present this information to you, and, and seek your guidance on, on what we want, what we should do next, uh, so, some ideas are, you could digest this information, we can talk about this in the next work, work session, or maybe in the next retreat. You could say, let's go ahead and add some questions to the happiness survey, so we can either go back with the residents and ask them if they want the city to, to actively promote Health and Wellness. You can consider looking at some short-term goals versus some long-term goals, um, we could ask the staff to come back to us with some great ideas, and then find out the cost of implementing that. Or like we did in the past, I think in the past, we had a budget of twenty-five thousand dollars per year, so you could come up with, with an, um, uh, budget amount, and then we can ask the staff to tell us, what are the best ideas that would fit into, into that budget amount, so those are all things that, uh, you can decide, uh, so, we just wanted to bring the information to you, and then let you decide what to do next. Uh, one thing, one clarification I wanted to add, uh, about the children, Cook's Children?
Uh, Children's Health, yeah.
Children's Health, my reading of Tracy's email was that they, they were only going to do some educational training, they did, they're not going to give us money, that, that's my understanding.
They will cover all the cost of, of those trainings and stuff like that, like they're not asking for funds to come out and do that, that's what, that was the clarification email that Tracy got, uh, when she reached out to them.
And we can, we can follow up with them, she did have a call with them, we were part of that, cause we asked her to go ahead and just vet it, and see, and then, um, we haven't had a chance to talk to Tracy since then, we weren't able to meet, and yesterday she was already gone, so, but our understanding was that, yes, they would do training, they would fund that training, um, but I'm sure that we could get them involved.
Oh, and I just wanna say, we definitely understood that, you know, hitting you guys with a bunch of graphs and, charts and stuff like that, it is a lot to digest, so we're, we're not, we're not necessarily pressing for an answer today, so that's why Remesh was kind of just giving some options, and those are all, you know, everything's on the table, like we don't have any, we really don't have an agenda past getting all the information, giving it to you guys.
So we are coming up on seven-thirty, real quickly, Vichy had one last question.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, you know, thank you for the work that you have done, three of you, we appreciate you, I need time to read this.
No, absolutely, and we'll send it electronically as well, we just, um, it's, it's all kind of the same thing, but in different formats, but I think it's important for everyone to review it, and I think it is important for us, to discuss kind of where Health and Wellness fits, because it hasn't been part of one of the pillars we've talked about in a while.
Yeah, and it'll help me, I get hit up for these challenges a couple of, three times a year, and I need to know quicker to tell them to engage, that we can engage or not, so.
Right.
Thanks for all the work, though.
Right, yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, the time is seven-thirty, we are, we are adjourned from work session, and we'll be entering into regular session of the council as soon as we get out there.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your patience. The time is 7:37 PM. And we're going to move into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your residence address. This evening, we are pleased to have Jataveta Desgupta of our Allies Interfaith Group to give our invocation. And then we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Board, and all the members, and everyone in the audience, I'm Jataveta, honored to represent the Capella Interfaith Group to offer an invocation this evening. We've all had a very challenging first quarter so far in terms of natural calamities, of fires in LA, as well as the inclement weather that just flew through our own city and the deadliest air crashes in the past 24 years. Let us pray together, oh Lord, with the advent of spring and the Hindu festival of holy around the corner, may your blessings bring new life, new color, and new hopes. Bless us with your grace and bring happiness, prosperity, and peace into our lives. With renewal and balance, may we embrace the season and guide us towards love, peace, and harmony. Om Shanti. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Item number six on our agenda is a presentation by New Tech High School students on water sustainability. And Mr. Jerry Young is going to lead that. I know this is going to sound awfully corny, but I really look forward to these presentations from New Tech, so the pressure's on, sir.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. Since 2019, the City of Capella has partnered with Mr. Porzio from New Tech High School on various water conservation projects. And while the past initiatives have focused on water conservation and increasing resident participation in the portal, this year marks a new challenge, one rooted in data analysis. So with this new direction came a new name, the ripple effect, Water Awareness for the Future. But it isn't just a title, it's more of a vision. The city aimed to be the initial droplet sparking engagement with these bright learners on the complexities of the city's water usage. Yet the true impact comes from them. For this year's project, we challenged these learners to analyze winter averaging, the method that we use to determine residential sewer charges. Specifically, we asked them to create a buffer based on statistical components for the summer months when water restrictions are in place. Now their entire class applied their own analytical skills, examined the data, and even developed their own recommendations, some of which were harsher than anything the city would impose. But this group of learners' recommendations was closely aligned to our early conclusions. So our hope is that this experience stays with them, having real-world application of data, policy, and even learning about conservation along the way. Just like the ripples in water, their fu, their insights don't stop here. They extend outward, influencing their futures and our communities. They've done exceptional work and I'm excited to hear, I'm excited for you to hear from them. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Porzio.
Hello. What was really special about this project was not just the real-world application, but allowing our high schoolers to feel part of the community and to be presented with a problem that they could solve with their academics. So the entire AP Stats classes participated, and we've got three to be able to present their work. We have Soraya, Ananya, and Rebecca.
So ladies, before you get started, if you'd kind of give us a little bit of background about yourselves, your, your names, and, you know, why you got interested in this, and then go forward with your presentation.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Mackay, and I was really interested in this because, I, I took AP Stats because I thought it would have a lot of real-world application. And so that's why I'm really excited about this project because hopefully it will actually have an impact on the community of Capella and be implemented. And I just thought that was really cool, working through this project.
My name is Sari Velker, and I don't know if my voice is picking up. Okay? Thank you. I thought this project, when it was first launched, I thought it was really interesting because I did, like Rebecca, really want to take stats because of the real-world, world application. I'm thinking of going into a field where stats is important, and so I just thought that this project was a great, like, launch to that.
I'm Ananya. I similarly took this class because I was looking for real-world application. I'm currently a senior, so I'm applying as an economics and business administration major. So this class was something that I really wanted to take because it aligns with my field of interests.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so starting, like, starting right off. Our guiding question was what buffer amount above the winter average should be allowed on non-watering days? In summary, basically, our main goal here as an AP Stats class was to find a buffer using statistical methodology that allowed for water usage on non-watering days without unfairly penalizing residents. So in terms of our method itself, to count, to tackle the large dataset we were provided, we split the process into three main steps. So first, we looked at the ratio of the winter average and the difference between the average usage and the winter average. So to find the difference in the average win, water usage and winter average, we found the water usage mean, and the ratio came out to about three, typically about one-third more than the winter average. So kind of visualize this like a, an equation with like the ratio of the winter average in the top and the difference between the average usage and the water, winter average in the bottom.
The second step of our method was to find the ratio of the winter average and standard deviation of water usage for all of the sampled properties. So how we originally did this was everyone in all of the AP Stats classes sampled five properties each and calculated the standard deviation of the water usage, the monthly water usage from 2023 and 2024. And then what we did as a group was we found the combined standard deviation of all of the properties from the dataset. And we divided the mean winter average water usage by this combined standard deviation, which gave us 3.039 standard deviations in that mean, which came into play when we were calculating our buffer, which we will touch more on later.
So our third step was after we calculated our buffer was to test this with histograms of each of the individual properties we sampled. So every individual in our AP Stats class sampled properties and created histograms for them. And then on those histograms, we marked where the buffer was of the winter average plus the standard deviations that we calculated. And this was important to ensure that we were testing a wide enough sample from the properties with information that we received and to ensure that we could look at the marked graphs and see if our buffer was located in an appropriate location.
And if you turn your attention to one of the screens, we have a couple of graphs that kind of represent step one and two that we talked about. So on the left-hand side, you can see a visual representation of some properties' daily averages and daily standard deviations and how they related. So the blue line is the daily average that we calculated for each property, and the red lines are the daily standard deviations. So essentially, the daily averages was about how much they used every day, and the daily standard deviations was how much that varied from day to day. So very low red lines mean that it didn't vary a lot on the day-to-day basis, and very high red lines mean that it varied a lot. And then the right-hand graph, you can see the water overuse in the summer versus the mean winter average for all of the data points. And you can see that the average overuse is about one-third of the amount of the winter usage, which, again, like we said before, about 3.039 standard deviations fit into the mean, which you can see visually represented here.
And now for the big reveal of our buffer. Our recommended buffer is 1.67 or 67% over the winter average. This is the amount of usage that a house can go over on a non-watering day. So as stated before, the standard deviation is around one-third over the daily usage. So to be exact, 3.039 standard deviations, like Rebecca said. And we found that this buffer can encompass that perfectly.
So we determined this number by looking at our data and our information, and we found that doubling the average amount over the winter average would be most appropriate. And we felt this because it would be more effective for widespread use, but also it could help account, based off of the graphs we looked at, the difference in household sizes and property sizes, because the houses with bigger or larger properties would be able to, you'd be able to see the difference, and it would give them enough space to properly stay within that buffer.
And now looking at our final step. To illustrate our findings, we decided to take some of our class histograms for each sample property's wa, water usage and marking, and mark the buffer. So you can see, if you turn your attention to the screen, that the black line delineates the monthly cap, and then the area shaded dark blue is warranted water use, and then the area shaded light blue is overuse of water. And so to determine this cap, we multiplied the winter average by 1.67, which is again our buffer. And I tried to put in two graphs that were obviously using more water than most households. And you can obviously still see that there's one that uses much more water than the other.
So when working through this project, what were our takeaways? What have we learned? So the main thing that we learned is that just to have more awareness for the actual water usage, when we were working through the data, we found that just so much water is used from different properties all the time. And that just kind of shocked us, and we learned that because we didn't know that before. We don't pay the water bills. We didn't know that kind of thing. And we also found that it's very expensive to use all that water. I believe it's about 20 million per year for the City of Capella to operate that watering system. So we just found it was very expensive for the City of Capella, and we want to take that into account, both of these things into account, when using water going forward.
To end off our presentation, we would like to again thank the City of Capella for giving us this opportunity. This project gave us the chance to work with a real-life scenario on a much bigger scale, and it also gave us the ability to work with larger datasets, which was really important for our AP Stats class and for us and our peers. So with that, are there any other questions we can answer?
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any, Councilmember Brianna Hinahosa-Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you all so much for being here and for a really great and informative presentation. I loved stats, so I, I enjoyed this very much. Question for any of you or all of you, but what was something that maybe you found surprising about the data that maybe you just weren't expecting? Or was there anything that was surprising?
I personally found it interesting how you could see houses with really big numbers, and then you would put it into a histogram, and the data would look very small, and the margin over would look very small, whereas you could see a house with really big numbers, and then it would be the opposite with true. And so I feel like with stats, something specific that when looking at the histograms you could see was how much data that looks very similar on paper and in numbers, once you put that into charts, how different it can look and how that can change how you interpret it.
Councilmember Prem Kamar?
Thank you, Mayor.
I didn't know if there was anybody else that had anything surprising.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I thoroughly enjoyed the presentation. Data analysis is what I do as my daily job. So thank you for doing that. And then a lot of credit to the city staff for coming up with this problem statement. I, I do hope that if you're not already doing it, we actually have such problem statements that the high school students, the juniors and seniors can, can work on, on a regular basis. We would love to, again, get some fresh perspective, new ideas. And I think, like you mentioned, you learn to appreciate how a city functions and appreciate that water costs a lot of money. My last ask of you guys is, you've done some fantastic stuff. If you can create a 30-second video that my grandma can understand, or your grandma can understand, and that would be fantastic because the city needs to learn what you have learned. So please do that, if you can. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Neves?
All right, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you all for being here today. Mr. Young, I have a question for you. Is their answer correct? I'm going to be really honest, I just heard two, two of my colleagues here say that they're into stats and data analysis, and I'm like, what? I did not, I did not excel in stats in school, so is it correct?
So we're actually still exploring, but right now we're leaning towards an even softer buffer, which would be doubling the winter average.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to help the Mayor Pro Tim out a little bit.
Yeah, I'm lost, but I think, I sounded great. Like, I thought y'all were fantastic.
So could you ladies explain, like, to your grandmother, or me, what that 1.67 means on an, how are we supposed to use that information? What, what do you expect the city, what is the city going to do with that information?
So when we were, the dataset that we were given had the monthly, the monthly water usages for different properties for all 24 months through 2023 and 2024. So essentially, this buffer would, from the winter months, so the winter months, you would take the average water usage from those months, and then times 1.67 would be the cutoff for where you can use water in the summer during watering days before they would get fined on, on days that they're not allowed to water. The properties aren't supposed to be watered.
Oh, on the days they're not allowed to water. Okay, that was not, that was what I was missing, so thank you very much.
So on days they are allowed to water, they can water as much as they need to.
See, okay, see, that helps me. So I just want to say, listen, you know, stats and data analysis is not my specialty, but what I do recognize is effort and hard work, and I think you guys in your entire class really showed that. And I really appreciate you guys coming up and sharing your findings with us. I like to let the smarter people in the room, you know, you know, give the suggestions on stuff like that. But thank you very much for coming and sharing with us. I think it just shows, you know, I think a lot of people say things about like, oh, you know, like kids these days and stuff. Well, you know what, kids these days are working hard, and kids these days are educating themselves, and you guys are going to have a bright future. So I want to say thank you so much for your efforts, and thank you for sharing your findings with us. We really appreciate it.
Any other questions? Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. It was a great presentation. Thank you. One question for you. You selected five houses. What's the square feet, what was criteria?
We decided to do a random sample so that we would get the most even distribution of data. So, I mean, for each group, we did 15 datasets, or like 15 households, and we did that across like two classes so that we could get like the, the most data we possibly could and encompass as many households as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Really appreciate all the effort you guys put into it. So you made a statement that you arrived at the 1.67, and that, that helped the, I guess, larger users when it came to going over and. larger users when it came to going over and that, would you have recommended a different buffer if, if you didn't have that kind of criteria that you were working on?
So the data sets we received didn't actually have square footage or the size of houses. We made those estimations based off of the amount of water each house was using because there were some houses that were using tens of thousands and then there were some houses in the hundreds. So because we didn't have those square footage numbers, we went for a general estimation in the middle of doubling the standard deviation so that we could then look at the graphs and see if that was approximately closer or further from how much water we estimated they were overusing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council? Well, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it and, you know, this only makes me look forward to next year's presentation. So even though some of you will probably be off in college by then, but thank you very much for all the hard work. Okay, item number seven is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your residence address. Presentations by individual shall be limited to three minutes each. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks, venue speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. We have one person that has signed up to speak tonight and that is Mr. Dave Shoff.
Dave Shoff, 215 West Wind Drive, Capel. This segment of the city council agenda is titled Citizens' Appearances. The implied purpose of this agenda item is for citizens of Capel to bring to the attention of city management areas of concern. In the past few months, however, there have been at least three major instances of specific non-Capel residents taking advantage of the good graces of the city council and by default all citizens of Capel to hijack and disrupt the purpose of the city council meetings with nonsensical inflammatory and/or totally inappropriate rants for their own dubious, self-serving ulterior motives. The topics of none of which were presented had any real bearing on the business and/or jurisdiction of the city. During city council meeting on February 25th, the citizens' appearance featured two individuals in collusion and of the same ilk who again commandeered this segment with a travesty show of disrespect and buffoonery and had another accomplice videotaping these imbecilic escapades for their personal use. Due to recent time speaking allowance changes implemented by the city council, they now had the stage for three full minutes each instead of their previous potential two-minute limit. So with now two speakers, the show went on for six minutes. I've since been told by the, that the city council can do nothing about this behavior because it is an issue of free speech. I do not accept that as a legitimate fact and view it as a perversion of the concept, if not the actual definition of free speech. Free speech is one's right to express their opinion in public without hindrance. However, it does not, or at least should not, give one that right to every stage without any rhyme, reason, or rules. In fact, the city council can and does make such rules to control order. You set the time limit. You make a disclaimer at the beginning about inappropriate statements. In short, you can control the horizontal, you can control the vertical, and you can return control of the settings to prevent this disruptive and inappropriate chicanery. You can prevent people from strutting and fretting upon this stage to intentionally create a mockery and gain attention for no legitimate purpose. You can restrict topics. You can verify that people signing up to speak are actual citizens or legitimate representative of citizens of Capel. You can check IDs and verify that addresses are within city limits and are not just citizens of the earth residing in North America who have no right to speak on our municipal platform. In conclusion, freedom of any sort is not free. It is incumbent on every citizen to exercise their freedoms properly and not be cowed or intimidated into inaction or acceptance of perversions of our rights by those who would only sow confusion. Good leaders find ways to solve problems and take proper courses of action to prevent chaos and confusion. As such, I therefore ask the city council to find a way to effectively take back control to prevent further improper disruptions to conducting legitimate city business in public. Thank you. There is an appointed, appointed time for everything and time for every affair under the heavens. Ecclesiastes 3:1. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council members did send in a number of questions and now's the appropriate time to ask those if you have any. Is there any item that we'd like to be pulled and considered separately? Councilmember Prem Kamar?
Thank you, Mayor. So for residents that do look at the different items that are part of the consent agenda, all of the background material is available on, on the internet. And I had some questions about the purchase cost of the traffic for 250 and the staff was kind enough to educate me that all of the dealer options are items that our staff needs to function, do their job properly. So again, thanks to staff for explaining that to me and then if any of the residents have questions, feel free to reach out to the staff or to your council members and we can ask those questions on your behalf. Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through H.
Second about Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Walker, Hinahosa, Smith, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kamar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask Ms. Peron Boswell to come read it into the record. Oh, she's already here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Item number nine is public hearing. Consider approval of PD 317R-C, a zoning change request from C Commercial to PD 317R-C, Plan Development 317 Revised Commercial, to approve a new detailed site plan for an 1,800-square-foot building on 0.23 acres of property located at 192 Southwestern Boulevard at the request of Danny Didick Greystone Construction, being represented by McAtee Engineering, LLC. There we go. So the site that we're discussing this evening is outlined in red. This was plotted as part of the Northlake Estates subdivision in 1961. The entire subdivision was originally commercially zoned and a portion was rezoned to residential later on. This is one of several, several original lots that face Southwestern Boulevard that remain commercially zoned. There are another three lots located on Howell directly north of these lots along Southwestern, which are also commercial, numbered one, two, and three on the map here. On the east side of Howell, facing Southwestern, Cavalry Construction was built a professional office and a garage over two lots. That's identified as number four. They were approved for a professional office with a driveway on Southwestern, which is their primary entrance, and one on Howell Drive. That was not constructed, but was approved if they ever decided to add it in the future. As it relates to land use, the request for professional office use is the least intensive land use within the list of permissible commercial uses and commercial zoning. The amount of parking required and the total trip generation is low in comparison to what could be allowed. The building is proposed to contain offices and a conference room and will be the home office for staff. So the homes to the north in the yellow were constructed in the late 1960s and early 1970s. The entire subdivision was, as I mentioned earlier, commercially zoned until 2002, when some of the homes were rezoned to SF7 within a planned development. You can see as PD 198 SF7 with conditions. This gave the residences a conforming status to allow for legal site improvements and the associated insurance and financing requirements. The subject property, along with several others, numbers one through four, in the subdivision, were never rezoned and remained commercial. There have been several special use permits, you can see the ones with the little orange dots, approved for the remaining commercially zoned properties. This is, has included a beauty salon, a construction office, landscaping business, and a trend trench safety consultant. These businesses were also granted parking, landscaping, and fencing exceptions. So the site plan that you're looking at this evening has been updated since we went to P&amp;Z to reflect the conditions added on at the P&amp;Z, at the P&amp;Z meeting. And these conditions are listed at the end of the presentation. So the site plan identifies the existing garage warehouse at the northern portion of the site, which is proposed to remain. The property backs up to a 15-foot alley right-of-way. What they plan to do is construct a new 1,800-square-foot office building with offices and a small conference room. Six new parking spaces are proposed for a total of seven. An eight-foot wooden board-on-board privacy fence with a cap is proposed to screen along the northern and western sides. The site will be accessed from Howell Drive. The big change from the first site plan to this one is that the existing driveway on Howell, which is outlined in the red box, is shifting down to the new parking lot. So there will still only be one driveway off of Howell. And the existing garage door that currently faces Howell is proposed to be relocated to the southern portion of the building, making any loading, unloading accessible from the interior of the site. So they are requesting PD conditions that relate to the setbacks reflecting not only the existing building location on site, but also the new building. Since there is limited room for development, staff is in favor of these setback requests. When we look at landscaping for this site, they are providing a minimum 15-foot landscape strip along Howell and along the southern portion of the site. Additional landscaping is being provided along the western perimeter and in front of the building. There is approximately 36% landscaping, which where typically we require 30. This does not include the right-of-way in front of this property along Southwestern Boulevard, which will also be landscaped and maintained by the applicant. This portion adds about 2,033 square feet of landscaping and again, as I mentioned, will be maintained by the applicant. So this is just a floor plan. The existing garage storage area is to remain. You've got the alley back there and then the new building will contain four offices, a conference room, a waiting area, break room, and restroom. So what you're looking at now is the actual existing garage area. So what we talked about was that garage door being moved to the southern part of the building. So if you look to, at the image on the right, so that big garage door will move beside that light blue door. And then the driveway that's currently in front of that on Howell will be converted into a parking spot with some additional landscaping around it. So this is what it will look like. The other changes will include adding a brick veneer wainscot to the building to make it match with the proposed elevation of the new building. So this is the proposed new building. It'll have a brick veneer with a standing seam metal roof and canopy across the northern facade. Large windows will frame the northern portion of the building and a good portion of the southern elevation. The eastern and western will be brick. The main entrance will be for the northern elevation access from the parking area. The address and sign for the business is proposed to be located on the southern elevation with 12-inch pin-mounted anodized aluminum letters. And there is an added variance for the glazing, basically on the northern side with all the windows. They're at about 60% where 50 is, is the standard or the requirement. And this is just a rendering of what that building is proposed to look like. So this is a public hearing, a zone change request. As such, we did send out notices to within 200 feet and additional 44 courtesy notices within 800 feet. We did receive one notice in opposition from the 800-foot. The main concern was not wanting to allow access on Howell Drive. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request subject to the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during the detailed engineering review. Two, PD conditions A through D, approve the reduced setbacks to allow the landscaping areas proposed, to allow the glazing of the building as shown, and to allow the parking as shown. Conditions three to five were added by the Planning and Zoning Commission and have been reflected on the plan just discussed. So number three was to move the garage door entrance off of Howell and place it interior to the site along the southern elevation, which they're showing. Number four, to remove the existing driveway that is currently used to access the garage door off of Howell and, and have the proposed driveway from Howell into the new parking lot, which is shown on the new site plan. And five, to convert the driveway to be removed into a head-on parking spot with access from the new driveway, which is also shown on the new site plan that we looked at. This, that is the end of my presentation, but the applicant is here as well if you have any questions.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, has the applicant approved the additional P&amp;Z conditions three through five?
Yes, sir.
They're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Could you go back, please, to the, I think it was the second slide you showed us with the original PD?
Sorry, a lot of moving parts.
Oh, that one?
Uh huh.
Okay, so the numbers one, two, three are still zoned commercial?
Correct.
And that's, that heralds back to their original zoning of that area before the PD on the SF7?
Correct.
Okay, and that's true for partial four as well, but, and
Yes, sir.
Aren't there homes on one, two, and three now?
So if you drive on there, yes, there are homes. So part of that, the SUPs that were adopted was to allow a business within a residential structure. So I think there was always houses, but they were commercially zoned.
Hmm, and are they being used for a commercial purpose today or are they being used for residential purposes?
So I believe number three is a landscaping business. One and two that have SUPs for, I think, a beauty salon and then for a trend trench service. I'm not sure if they are still being used for commercial or if they are being used residentially. I don't know.
When, presuming that number three, as you say, is currently landscaping business, is access to that commercial business from Howell?
So they do have a driveway off of Howell. So everything on Howell has like a front entry and I believe maybe number three has also access from the alley behind it.
Okay, but, but number three is a landscaping business does have frontage access off of Howell?
Yes.
Which is the same thing that
Yeah, everything along Howell.
They're asking in this application. Okay. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, question for you. Thank you for the presentation. On the applicant's letter, item number one, it says, "The owner will post no commercial vehicle sign." Is that, are they allowed to do that?
So they were willing to put like a no parking sign on their building or on their property, but technically to, to do something like that, we'd have to do an ordinance. So we did talk about that with them.
Does the applicant have any comments to make tonight?
No, thank you very much.
All right. This is a public hearing and we did not have anybody signed up to speak. So any other comments or questions about So any other comments or questions about counsel? Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. This might be, actually be a question for the applicant, but what type of vehicles are planning on using Howell to enter in the site? Like, is that regular, or are it going to be more commercial-grade vehicles?
Sure, I can answer that question. There's actually three of us employed with Greystone. I'm one of the co-founders.
Okay.
I actually drive an F-250 truck.
Oh, that's pretty big. No, I'm just kidding.
My business partner drives an F-250 truck.
Okay.
And our project manager drives an F-250 truck.
I'm noticing a trend here, sir.
We did hire a business development mitigation rep two weeks ago, and he drives a company vehicle. That is a Chevrolet Traverse, which is a midsize SUV.
Would you say that's pretty common to the type of vehicles that'll be coming in on Howell to enter the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other discussion or debate? Councilmember Carroll? I looked your way first.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, oh, I move to close the public hearing and approve item number nine with conditions.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Hill. All in favor?
Ms. Walker, Hina Jose Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is a public hearing, so I will open this public hearing and consider approval of PD 323 HC, Capel Entertainment Plaza Lot 1, Block A, its zoning change request from HC Highway Commercial to PD 323 HC, Plan Development 323 Highway Commercial, to allow for a detailed site plan for a building containing five pickleball courts at 13,000 square feet with a speculative restaurant, 2,485 square feet, and retail space of 2,170 square feet totaling 17,655 square feet on 1.6 acres of property located on the north side of Highway 121, approximately 940 feet west of North Denton Tap Road, being developed by Capel PKB LLC, being represented by Lindsey Mayer, Dynamic Engineering Consultants.
Mr. Steer?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This property has never been platted. The zoning was changed from light industrial to highway commercial district in 2004. The site plan and plat were approved for an office and retail building, but this was never constructed or recorded and has since expired. This is a 1.6-acre site, and the site shows a one-story building containing five pickleball courts with speculative restaurant and retail space totaling 17,655 square feet. The pickleball business will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it will be staffed until midnight and then closely monitored remotely through security cameras after midnight. According to the applicant, they plan on attracting restaurant and retail space that are in alignment with their sports-focused concept. This means prioritizing businesses either related to sports or catering to athletes as part of their target customer base. Because the restaurant is unknown at this time, we have included the hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM in the recommendation, so they'll not have to come back through the PD amendment process just to establish their hours of operation. The site has four shared mutual access fire lanes connecting in with the east and west properties. There are 66 required parking spaces, 73 parking spaces being provided. There's a six-foot masonry wall that's proposed to be constructed along the north property line, adjacent to the Capel Greens Residential Subdivision, and the screening wall will be required to be constructed prior to the buildings going vertical. There's a detention area west of the proposed building with a tie-in to the tech-stot drainage system, so tech-stot's approval is listed as a condition of staff's recommendation. According to the tree survey, there are six protected trees. They're proposed to be removed on-site, and then there's one 14-inch protected tree that's proposed to be preserved. The tree mitigation required for the site is $4,600 plus $2,800 for off-site mitigation, bringing the total to 7,400. The off-site mitigation is for drainage improvements. There are 40 three-caliper-inch overstory trees required. There's 25 four-caliper-inch trees proposed, and then two three-caliper-inch trees, as well as 36 accent trees that count at a ratio of three to one, and then the one existing tree on the northwest corner fulfills their tree requirements. The landscape plan is compliant with the landscape area required. They're providing 25% landscape area with 8% enhanced paving, being the drive on the The proposed metal building will be clad with brick and stone. Since P and Z, the height was increased from 23 feet to 29.5 feet, and this still falls well within the allowable 70-foot height of the highway commercial base zoning. So we'll pass around the color board, which is the materials. I guess it's been passed around.
It's already gone.
Okay. The materials and colors have changed since the Planning and Zoning Commission. Originally, it was proposed to have a gray stucco and stone. It now has red brick and stone, similar materials to the LA Fitness and the adjacent office buildings. It still has a gray metal canopy as well as a gray metal roof. We sent out 18 notices within 200 feet, 120 courtesy notices within 800 feet. Staff has not received any written responses to the letters that were sent out, although we did hear from the Capel Greens HOA stating that their only concerns would have been related to the lighting, but it appears as though there will not be an issue based on the photometric plan. Phil Byrd spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission and asked for access to the Capel Greens common area, asked for that access to be provided, and the applicant agreed, and they're working out the details of an access gate along the screening wall. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Plan Development 323 HC, Capel Entertainment Plaza, subject to the following conditions. One, that tech-stot be required to approve the tie-in to their stormwater system. Two, there will be additional comments at the time of detailed engineering review and building permit. Three, a plat will be required to be filed of record prior to permitting. Four, all attached building signage shall comply with the signed section of the zoning ordinance. Five, the six-foot screening wall will be required to be constructed prior to the buildings going vertical. Six, allow for an access point to the Capel Greens commercial area, subject to the applicant and the HOA working out an access agreement. And the last two conditions relate to the hours of operation, which will be to allow for the pickleball facility to be operated 24 hours, seven days a week, and then eight to allow for the restaurant to be operated from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, seven days a week. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is in the audience as well if you have any questions for him.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Steer? Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. What's the operational hours for the restaurant?
The 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, seven days a week, is what we're proposing.
What are the times for other restaurants in town?
I'm thinking the Singas Pizza that was just brought, brought forward. I think that was 6:00 AM to either 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, and the Jason's Deli was a similar timeframe.
Are they serving alcohol at this restaurant?
At this restaurant, it's unknown. They, this is a speculative restaurant space. So we're just setting up the hours of operation.
Okay, so if they do need to serve alcohol, they need to come back to us for approval?
No, sir. No, they would go through the TABC permitting for that. I see. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. Since the pickleball courts will be indoors, there will not be a noise issue, right? Because it's 24/7.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim Neville?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to confirm, I'm looking at the renderings and the elevations and stuff. I've seen facilities with, with roll-up doors for pickleball courts. We're not, we're not seeing anything like that here, right? It's going to be completely enclosed?
Correct.
Perfect, that's what I knew. No, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Steer? Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add?
No, actually, I'm talking about
Please come on down and, and speak into the mic so we can hear you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So I just want to reemphasize our development goal. The goal is to create a clean and safe indoor pickleball club that promotes the health lifestyle while meeting the demand for indoor sports and a social gathering space. The club offers affordable pricing for visitors, along with the pickleball academies for adults and children, as well as senior programs covered by insurance. So my name is Jason Chen, and I own the pickleball club in North Fort Worth, near the Keller. So it has already been operating for one year, and we have been, we have built a strong community over there. Within three months, we have 1,600 registered members. Now, it's already one year, we have 5,000 registered members, and we have been hosting company building events, all the academy for kids, and leagues and tournaments, and it's going to be a great entertainment place in Capel. And also, the idea is also provide some like coffee shop. It categorizes as a restaurant, but I personally prefer the coffee shop and bakery, so because our player has been craving for coffee and eating options over there. So, yeah, with that, I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Brianna Hina Jose Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that it's open 24/7. Is your other facility also 24/7?
Yes, we have been operating one year. There was zero criminals, safety issues, and vandalizing because our club is more kind of high-tech knowledge, so each of court, and even the entries have the cameras, it covers all. Also, we provide the live streaming website. Basically, everyone, every player, they can see people playing over there, including our remote staff. Our remote staff, we have two, a few shifts. Tonight's shift is actually located in Asian, so they monitor everything. So it's happened one year, so everything's good.
So I was, I was asking from the standpoint of, do you find people that are using it like from 12:00 AM to 8:00? Like, I was just curious as far as usage.
Oh, usage.
Because you have it for 24/7, so that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, yeah, understood. So there was not a whole lot of them, but there were some of them, they, for example, they prepare for tournaments. They need urgent exercise, or someone, they fly from, we close to airport, right? They have jet lag. They just need something to work out. Yeah, so.
Okay. And then, now I just have a question. You mentioned staff being remote. Is all your staff remote?
No, no, no.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it's the, the cost, partial of customer service. They handled all the billing and other questions, booking questions. Our onsite staff is more focused on how to promote the communities, provide the information, organize the plan, and the coaching, all those stuff. Sure.
Counsel, any other questions? This was a public hearing. We did not have anybody signed up to speak. So, Counsel, I'll leave that back in your... Mr. Steer, did you have something you were going to add?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, sorry. Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to propose that we close public hearing number 10 and approve as stated, with conditions listed.
Thank you. Seconded by Mayor Protim Neville. All in favor?
Walker, Hina Jose Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on, item number 11 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask Mr. Steer to read that one into the record.
This is item number 11. It's to consider approval of text change amendments to the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 12, Article 42, special definitions, to add definitions for showroom, warehouse, distribution center, fulfillment center, and retail center, and to amend Article 25 Light Industrial District of said chapter to add said new definitions to permitted uses and to amend Article 31 of said, said chapter to allow conversion of dock doors to additional parking, to allow warehouse, distribution center, and fulfillment center as defined herein to require not less than one parking space per 2,000 square feet, showroom as defined herein to require not less than one parking space per 1,000 square feet, to allow the Director of Community Development to approve up to a 10% reduction in parking required for retail users with buildings greater than 10,000 square feet. So the purpose of these amendments to the zoning ordinance are to incorporate items discussed during the Industrial 2.0 and Retail Round Tables that the city performed in fiscal year 23. These will allow for more flexibility in parking requirements for industrial and retail users. Changes include definitions for more specific uses not currently listed. These changes are city-initiated, and we briefed counsel on these concepts in September, and were given consent to bring these forward. A portion of this proposed code amendment was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission in October 2024, and after the recommendation for approval by the commission, staff paused on proceeding to City Council to combine all the parking-related amendments and add definitions for specific land uses. We brought the revised changes back to the commission in February. The first is to allow for conversion of the dock areas to vehicular parking within an existing industrial site, provided the area is screened from view. You can see there's an addition of the parking, and then there's the screening of view. Currently, a conversion of dock areas to car parking would necessitate a minor site plan amendment and would need approval from the Director of Community Development. With this amendment, the change would be allowed by right and be, could be done at time of building permit. You know, the amendment would allow more flexibility for reconfiguration of the site to accommodate more vehicles for change in tenant operations, change in tenant or operations of an existing tenant, and the space could easily be converted back if that user changes. Just to be clear, this is not a drop-off area or pickup area for children, but rather an area that's used for the shipping of goods on industrial sites. The second is a minor text amendment, also the result of Industrial 2.0 Roundtable. During that roundtable, it was a consensus that the increased use of technology within industrial developments, with that, the number of employees for, per square feet has decreased. It was recommended that staff research decreasing our minimum parking requirements. While it is recommended that showrooms continue to have a parking requirement of one parking space per 1,000 square feet, the warehouse, distribution center, and fulfillment center uses are proposed to require one parking space per 2,000 square feet or one per employee on the maximum working shift. So what staff's observed is the larger the warehouse, the emptier the parking area. Over the years, we've seen changes with the types of specific uses in the industrial district. As found in the council memo and the packet, the definitions of distribution center, fulfillment center, warehouse, and showroom reflect the more precise uses. The retail center definition has been included in the next amendment. The retail parking amendment was a result of a retail roundtable held with retail developers to discuss the future trends in retail. During the roundtable, the parking requirements for retail centers was brought up. Parking requirements of the zoning ordinance are based on extreme cases during peak times, and often there's a large amount of parking that's never utilized except for during the The proposed amendment would authorize the Director of Community Development to approve a reduction in the number of required parking spaces not to exceed a 10% reduction. Any reduction greater than 5% shall require a parking study, an alternate parking plan obtained by the owner or developer of the property that's prepared by a licensed transportation engineer. Greater flexibility in administering the parking requirements allows for more potential businesses to fill the retail centers. The reason for the 10,000-square-foot threshold is related to the number of tenants. Anything under 10,000 would have fewer tenants and therefore less Anything under ten thousand would have fewer tenants and therefore less parking wiggle room. Again, the purpose of these amendments to the zoning ordinance are to incorporate concepts discussed during the Industrial Two Point O and Retail Round Tables that the city performed in fiscal year twenty-three. These will allow for more flexibility in parking for industrial and retail users. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the text amendments after holding a public hearing. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Steer, okay, so for example, with respect to the fulfillment center that you showed and with all the empty parking, is the change there with respect to the requirement something that you think there's a desire on behalf of those operations to expand their warehouse? And they want to know that, are we looking at expanding, for example, the footprint of the building to accommodate greater space, utilizing automation, requiring less employees? Is that what?
It's just to allow for more flexibility in what they want to do. So change in interior uses as well.
Yeah, okay. Do you think that there's a current need for expanding the footprint of some of those facilities that were, some of the diminished parking requirements would be, have like immediate utility?
I'm not absolutely sure if it would allow for expansion of the actual building size or not.
And then on the retail parking, with respect to the discretion being given the Director of Community Development, is that something that would be done with respect to like a request for a new development or for a request of redevelopment of an existing site? Or is this something where they could just simply come and say, well, we want to expand our footprint and therefore we're going to require less parking?
It's actually a change in the tenant mix because most of the retail centers, they're parked at, you know, half retail and half restaurant and so this would allow for more flexibility in securing that last tenant to lease the last tenant space.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Steer, thanks for the presentation. If you can kindly clarify, will this cause any changes or reduction in parking in either Old Town or any of the grocery stores that we have in Copel?
In terms of Old Town, I don't believe it would affect anything in Old Town. In terms of the shopping centers like where Trader Joe's is at, this would affect their parking, it would allow them more flexibility in their parking requirements as well as the Tom Thumb Center. I've got a few of them outlined here in their square footage.
So effectively, they could reduce their parking?
Reduce their required parking, yes. And if the Director of Community Development does not want to sign off on it administratively, then we'd bring him through the process.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned here distribution center, fulfillment center, warehouse and showroom. Is that in line with the other cities surrounding us?
The definitions?
No, definition and what we are trying to accomplish here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I had one question. The one of the early slides showed an overhead view of a warehouse, distribution center, this one. Is that representative of the amount of parking that's actually required by facility that size?
Yeah, I just pulled up a random large warehouse.
That pretty vacant parking lot.
Yeah, it was.
Except at Christmas time, yes. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Did I announce a public hearing or was this?
It is a public hearing.
What's that? We'll do it again. What's that? This was a public hearing. We had nobody signed up to speak, so counsel, it's back in your hands. Mayor Protem Nevils.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve agenda item eleven.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Carroll, all in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa-Smith, Carol, Nevils, Prem Kamar, Matthew and Hill, all in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number twelve. Mr. Steer, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, sir. This is item number twelve. It's to consider an ordinance amending Chapter Nine of the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Nine General Regulations to add Article Nine dash thirty Charity House or Transitional Housing, providing for regulations for the registration and use of charity or transitional housing, providing for definitions, providing for inspections, providing for restrictions, providing for neighborhood notification, providing for violations and penalties, providing fees, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause and providing for an effective date and authorizing the mayor to sign. In April twenty-twenty-four, council approved text amendments to the zoning ordinance establishing a special use process for charity and transitional housing. The approved definition reads, "Charity house or transitional housing shall mean short or long-term temporary occupancy of a single-family residential structure uncompensated or de minimis fee for persons that are sick, very poor, homeless or have special needs or are disabled." This definition does not include assisted living, group homes, halfway house or other type of temporary house listed under state law or defined in the Code of Ordinances. With an S U P, charity or transitional housing is not allowed, or it is allowed in the estate district, single-family districts and the historic district after notifications to surrounding property owners within two hundred feet as required by state law and notification to surrounding property owners within eight hundred feet as a courtesy. Notices published in the newspaper, a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council and a special use permit has been granted, then the owner of the property will be required to obtain a charity or transitional housing permit. As found in the proposed ordinance, the permitting, registration, renewal and inspection process will be treated identically to lodging houses or short-term rentals. So we set the process, as I said, to be identical to the short-term rental process. First, they obtain the S U P and then they get it registered, inspected and permitted with the city. The registration process with the city includes obtaining contact information, verification that the property is indeed the applicant's residence, twenty-four hour emergency contact, acknowledgement that this approval doesn't supersede any HOA or deed restrictions or other laws, will require a floor plan, site plans and zoning information and it'll be valid for one year. Then we set up an inspection process with this ordinance to, there will be the initial inspection by the city and then to verify the independent inspections related to fire code, meaning the extinguishers and suppressant systems as well as other life safety issues and to inspect it to make sure it's compliant with the site plan that was submitted to the city. And then there will be re-inspections as needed due to issues associated with the initial inspection. The general requirements are again the same as the S T R requirements that say no external signage, maximum of two occupants per bedroom, maximum one car per bedroom provided they can be accommodated onsite within the garage or the driveway. And there will be no advertising until they have obtained the permit. It requires certain things when advertising like the permit number be stated, occupant max load, ensure that the hotel occupancy tax be paid. There's a written prohibition related to establishing a party venue, no illegal activity, of course. We can't have sex offenders selling illegal drugs, selling alcohol or operating as a sexually-oriented business. Then it also requires a brochure be offered for the guest in the home containing contact information, guidelines related to parking, noises, trash collection and emergency information. After we've done the registration and inspection process and we issue the permit, we'll notify the surrounding property owners within two hundred feet within ten days of the approval. And then we've set up a permit, the permit may be suspended for up to a hundred and fifty days if there's two violations of the Code of Ordinances that, you know, goes to court and then they find that there's two violations. And then the permit may be denied for up to one year if suspended more than one time. And then the permit can be revoked if it does have four violations of this article or other health, safety or welfare ordinances. And it sets up the B O A as the appeal authority. That all being said, staff recommends approval of the proposed regulations for charity and transitional housing, allowing us to permit them and inspect them in the same way that we do lodging houses or S T Rs. And this will fill the gap that currently exists in our ordinance. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Steer? Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Steer. And for my clarification, today we do not have any guidelines or restrictions and if this ordinance is approved, the city of Copel and its residents will actually have the ability to put some regulations and guidelines, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you is it says charity house or transitional house, so it's between one day and less than thirty days, right? In between those days, we are treating this as a short-term rental.
It's similar to a short-term rental, yes, sir.
No, but my question is if it's about thirty days we are renting out, it falls into, it will not fall into short-term rental, but it will be a long-term rental.
I'm not absolutely sure we have the amount of time. I don't know if Bob's here, if you want to help me answer. Bob?
I went to Sloan Kettering for my wife. We lived in transitional charity house for forty-five days. So it was, so it's really hooked with the use. It could be either short-term or long-term. We actually discovered what I would call ambulatory recovery house in town without a permit. It was actually in a multifamily setting and they were, basically you could go and have your surgery instead of going home because you were in an anesthetic, they would transport you to an apartment here in town where you were allowed to recover and someone would take you, because they didn't have anyone to take them home. So this kind of transitional housing, it's really a loophole in our short-term and long-term rental that we've closed up and so it would either be a long-term or short-term, the way it's written now.
So what I'm hearing is there is no dates or number of dates attached to this?
Correct. It's the use, what we have is there's no fee, there's no rental for the patient. He's paying a fee to, like when I, when we stayed at Sloan Kettering, I'm sure somewhere some of the money that we were paying to Sloan Kettering or the insurance company was paying helped with the transitional housing, but there's no cost to the patient. So we don't have to track that. Matt indicated that there might be hotel occupancy taxes if it's true charity house or what I would call this transitional housing, there may not be because the costs are covered by a el masonry institution or a church or some other foundation pays that fee for you. So they really don't have rental. So we've had people that, when we approached them about either registering their S T R or registering the long-term rental, they said, well, we're running a charity house and it was a loophole and we want to close that loophole. If we were closer to say Baylor or Presbyterian, Ronald McDonald House is charity house and transitional housing. That's something we're all familiar with, so. And we saw a couple of these as we've gone through this process. Like I said, we have a couple of ambulatory surgical day surgery places here in town now. And so we started seeing these pop up. People fly into town, have surgery, they fly out, but they can't fly right away, so they're in this transitional housing for a period of time until they recover, so.
Just a follow-up question. If it's a charitable donation to those patients that you just mentioned, how do we collect hot tax?
We wouldn't.
Okay.
That was, we don't know all the financing part of that, but if it was truly el masonry and you just were put there because you were a patient at that medical institution, you wouldn't pay any rent, there wouldn't be any charge for that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Prem Kamar.
A question for Bob or Mrs. Steer. How, and this is my lack of understanding, how do we make sure that someone does not abuse this and start using it as a short-term rental?
Well, either complaint or if we have access to it for the permitting, we'll know. Because when we did an inspection and caught someone basically with one of these facilities, we went in and did an inspection and we had to get a search warrant for admitted because we knew something was going on and we went in and found the situation was, it was obvious what was going on based on the pictures. So there is enforcement, people do complain when there's these kind of uses if there's no permit, just like any short-term, long-term rental or any other complaint-based code violation.
Counsel, any further questions? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number twelve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa-Smith, Carol, Nevils, Prem Kamar, Matthew and Hill, all in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number thirteen is the City Manager Reports on Project Updates, Future Agendas and Directions from Work Session. Mr. Lan.
Mayor and council, just a quick update. Magnolia Park Trail Contractor is continuing to work on the Gabion Basket Installation. Royal Lane, you will be seeing more information about this a week from Thursday on March the twentieth from seven AM to nine PM. Construction relating to the Silverline project will be occurring, shutting down Royal Lane. The detours will be posted, information will be put out, but again, that's on Thursday, March the twentieth from seven AM to nine PM. Royal Lane at the Dart Line will be closed. Excuse me, Fire Station Number Five, the interior work continues. The generator will be delivered this week via crane. Service center installation of the foundation piers, water and sewer utilities have been installed. Woodridge Channel Stream Bank stabilization, say that three times fast, is out to bid. The six thirty-five U-turn construction continues by TexDOT sometime next week. The bridge over Beltline or the Beltline Bridge will be closed while that work is going on, so we'll get that information out at least a week in advance. And then currently, the Copel Village Collective Survey is out. For those that are interested in the concept, we ask that you take a few minutes to fill out the survey so that we can have a better guide on how we implement that program. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number fourteen is the Mayor and Council Reports on Recent and Upcoming Events. I would like to take the opportunity to thank members of the council that attended the Copel Day in Austin. That included councilmembers Carol, Matthew, Prem Kamar and Mayor Protem Nevils. We had a very, very successful day in Austin, attending along with our members of the School Board and our Chamber of Commerce. In total, we had over thirty people in Austin. I think the telling thing was when our representative newly elected, Cassandra Garcia Hernandez, commented that we were very, we were one of the best represented cities in the state and she really appreciated us being there. So it was a, it was a good visit. So thanks to all the council that was there and. So it was a, it was a good visit. So thanks to all the council that was there, and hope that we get to, well, not next year, but in two years, I'm sure we'll be back down there. Just as a note, the city of Copel will be hosting a Community Blood Drive on March 18th from 9:30 to 3:00 p.m. at the Fire Training Room at Fire Station Number 3. Sign up at greatpartners.org. Everyone who gives blood will receive a 30-ounce black camouflage tumbler as a free gift. Okay, moving on to item number 15. This is Council Committee Reports Concerning Items of Community Interest and Involvement with No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. Report on Metrocrest Services with Councilmember Bijou.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind the council that the Metrocrest Service 20th Annual Key Holder Breakfast will occur on April 3rd at the Carroll, Carrollton Marriott, and the city of Copel is a sponsor for that event. This stats that I'm going to provide is for October 2024 to December 2024. There were 442 residents visited the pantry, foot pantry to the Metrocrest. During Thanksgiving, about 128 families were provided a turkey, and 113 Copel children were provided gifts through our holiday program. Nine households utilized workforce development services to prepare them for a successful job search. Four families were assisted with financial coaching to create household budgets, strategies for debt reduction, and creating savings plan. 25 households received emergency rent and utility assistance totaling about $16,122. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 16 are Public Service Announcements Concerning Items of Community Interest with No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. Do we have any PSAs? Counselmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that we knew he was an elite athlete when he was a Copel Cowboy, and now I want to congratulate Solomon Thomas on coming home and becoming a Dallas Cowboy. We're all excited about seeing him. I want to congratulate his parents, Martha and Chris. I know they're excited about having their son home and playing here in the, the Death Star down there with Jerry Jones. I just wanted to say, welcome home, Solomon Thomas.
Needless to say, they don't have to make midnight flights from one side of the coast to the other anymore.
That's exactly right.
Big, big shout-out to Solomon. Thank you very much. Any other PSAs? Seeing none? There was no necessary action from executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before this, counsel, we are adjourned at 8:58 p.m.